Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Danvers zoning board of deals. We are now in session. Could I ask everyone who silks their cell phones? Turn them off so we don't get interrupted, please. You have agendas up front if anybody wants to follow along with the agenda. Let me introduce the board. From my right, Bob Signetti. Our clerk for tonight, John Warner. Jeff Sauer. Ken Jarvinian. Corinne Doherty. And from the building inspectors department, Rich Maloney, our building inspector. And our secretary, Kathy Archimaeus. And me, Ken Jarvinian. Motion to accept the minutes from last meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is how we're gonna work the meeting. We're gonna read off the applicant and what they want to do. We're gonna have the applicant come up to the microphone, tell us out their name and what they'd like to have done. And then we're gonna ask questions of that applicant. And then we will ask questions of the audience if there are any. And then we'll come back to the board and deliberate and we'll get to see whether we have the votes for whatever motion they want to have or they don't. And if they don't, we'll lead them on to what they do for now. So that being said, we're gonna continue with our continued case that is going to continue to our next meeting.
I'll settle as the judge. Our first case tonight is Paul Malvich and Jean Daimon, docket number 19 dash 4817, requesting a variance to allow construction of a duplex on a property with less than required area in accordance with section 2.9 table 2 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 56 Adams Street, Mr. Chair. We are on receipt of a letter from attorney Nancy McCann. Dear board members on behalf of the applicant, John M. Thompson, due to a scheduling conflict, we hereby request that this matter be continued without discussion to the board's meeting on May 13.
Can I get a motion?
Can I make a suggestion that we pull the end of the meeting to say if there are any issues?
Yeah, I would say.
That sounds good. So all that is...
So we'll hold for the end of the meeting.
Mr. Chair, our next case is our continued case for Danvers Port Yacht Club Marina LLC, Joseph D. Lorenzo, docket number 19 dash 4813, requesting a special permit to modify an existing special permit which is number 13 dash 4465 to install new signage in accordance with section 37 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 107th and Elliott Street.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Joseph D. Lorenzo. Thanks for continuing to hear our application and to the code administration department for preparing the history of the sign and the modifications through the years that we all have. Last time we heard some concerns from the board during deliberations and from some Danvers residents. And with our new adjusted sign plans, we took this feedback and we feel like we addressed these concerns and have an all-around better sign than we started with. In our last plan, we made a mistake by not including public access area on the sign. We realized this and have included it more prominently on the new plan. And with this new plan, there's now an entirely separate panel for that public access area portion. The text on this panel itself is actually bigger than the text on the currently approved sign. It's about an inch, inch and a half bigger. And in addition to being larger text, it also stands out from the main panel and calls attention to the fact that there is space there for the public to enjoy. We also removed that bulky V-shaped design, so if you remember, the backside of the sign was angled out from the existing panel to try to show the traffic better. But we took that out, we scrapped it, and now the sign only uses the front and back of just one piece there. The small solar powered lights would remain unchanged. And in terms of size, after, you know, making the new separate section for the public access area, the footprint of just the one side is only .7 square feet larger than the currently approved sign that's in place. We were a little surprised at the last meeting when the board had received a packet of printed out concerns or constituents that we just weren't aware of. So with this in mind, I went to the building department today and picked up the additional packet that you are on receipt of. We find that many of the concerns rely on a nearly 30-year-old document that's been amended multiple times, so we don't see that it's particularly pertinent or happy to address any of the concerns that are on there. And I think all of Rich Maloney who has a better knowledge of the concerns. But we do believe in closing that we have a great sign that's addressed the concerns of the board and the residents. The sign updates our brand and keeps us as a current business in the town of Danvers. I just wanna thank you again for hearing our application and we're gladly answer any questions as best as I can. Thank you.
Before I go to questions, I wanna go to the building inspector on the packet we received.
Yep.
I know we discussed some of these issues in this packet, planning board issues.
Some are planning board issues, some are fine con issues.
That means, I guess we'll go with the first part. This side is bigger than what the current side is.
Yes, sir.
Would you have the pleasure of saying?
I have a, if it pleases you, I have a handout that shows the square footage. I haven't distributed it. I can distribute it now if you'd like, but it does show one side is... One side is .7 square feet bigger.
What you want, the side of the sign?
We've just put it on the back, yeah.
And it's gonna happen in the same spot that the current sign is?
Yes, sir.
And you think it's gonna be in the middle from... How do you come around with direction, definitely?
Well, it will be. It's the way that it was, it's always been. That's how it always, you know, had the sign on that Beverly sign, so yes, I think it will be, it will be.
But see, the present sign doesn't have a...
Correct. There's no value in that for this point.
Okay. I think that that sign is gonna increase business and do all kinds of wonderful things for the Marina.
I think it's beneficial. We're watching.
How? That's my question. How is it beneficial for the Marina? Is it gonna get more business or you just want something that looks nice?
No, I think that there's so many people that come from the Cummings Center or the Beverly train station that go to 128 now, but there's a lot of people that drive by there and would see that sign. It's good for our business if more people have seen it.
Those same people would vote that in the other direction so they see it when they go to home, right? Rather than sign. So they know your business is there. See, this is something that is kind of a bother to my head. Businesses want all kinds of signs and labels and this and that and the other thing. And my question is, why not? If you're not gonna generate more business, you're just gonna make yourself, I guess, more known than the sign you have is adequate. I mean, you just, you know, it's time to change and we want a new sign.
You know, they say there's what the adage takes seven times before you can sell someone something, you know, hear something a number of times.
The point of all this, you guys...
So I'm saying the question with the Marina, that's really like, you know, we think it benefits all those people driving by seeing it.
Signs benefit the drivers. I like that. That's why we've got them all 114. They love 114 because that's all they can see is signs for them. And you reach a point where you have so many signs, nobody sees any of them. I have no further questions.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Mr. D. Lorenzo, I did, I wasn't here last week, obviously, or last meeting, I did watch the tape, but I have a couple of questions regarding the solar system lights.
It is illuminated from four 250 movement landscape lights? That would be in the mulch, so they're down in the ground, current facing up on this?
They'd be pointing directly at the sign, yes, sir. And that lighting is 24 seconds?
No, it would stop at 10, 10 minutes, just like the same as the Danvers Port events.
Okay. It's not, but after 10 minutes?
Correct.
And these are new pillars to hold this sign with this drawing or those are existing?
The structural components of the pillars are existing. They would be encased in like a white Azac-like material, just pretty much, they're like a wooden pole material.
And this is a plastic sign, a wooden sign? What is this?
Acrylic, like a composite sign.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, if I could go to the building inspector.
Rich, so the small public access area sign underneath, that is out of their signage and is out of this category of square footage or is not because it's a separate sign, nothing to do with Danvers Port?
Well, it's their land and the public access required is part of the land court decision. But in that original decisions, there was no signage required, you know.
So I guess...
This board required that signage at a later date when they first proposed a sign out there. All the land court decisions did, I think I gave everybody an outline of what happened. So the original land court decision just said that they can have a sign out on Elliott Street.
Which they did.
Never talked about having the public access sign out there. It came in when the board granted the sign out there, they put the public access on that original sign.
But this public access sign doesn't cut into their allotted amount?
There is no allotted sign amount. It's whatever this board decides. There is no minimum, maximum.
It's not like 10% of the sign or anything?
That's right. Whatever this board decides to grant them signage, this board grants under the special permit.
This is under the special?
That's right.
Okay, and I guess I have a further question, sir.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair. Can you see public access portion, that little strip underneath, is that illuminated as well?
It'll be illuminated as part of the overall sign.
Yeah.
It'll be the same hours, it almost has to be because the lights are right at that sun.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so the light's just set right on an angle and pointing out. I forgot that it was not LEDs inside or something. All right, I have all the questions.
I don't have any questions.
Sure. When you figure the size of the sign, is that including the public access sign?
Yes.
So it's all one big thing?
Yeah. Would you like to distribute these?
No, 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 they have them on pictures. Look at this drawing, it doesn't show the, I guess it would be the vertical side, it
shows, it looks like it ends at the bottom of your sign, not the public access sign. The 38 and a half inches.
I can show you, this would be better to stand up. Just broken down into simple shapes, I think, to understand. So it is. Yeah, it must be there, sorry.
So I guess my only question is, your sign is 38.5 inches high and the public access sign is 3.75 inches wide.
We took the initial plans that we delegated that had a visually appealing look to them and continue to run with them. The font of the, the size of the public access area is larger than what was currently approved by the board for the current sign.
Any other questions in there?
Could you tell me what the spaces in between the Danvers Port sign and the public access sign?
We have some, I guess, business units, splits, storage, sales, and service, so there's gray text, is that, I think that's what we're referring to?
No. So you have a space between the two signs? And what does that measure?
That would be about two and a half inches.
So if we were doing this by the town's code, it's 38 and a half plus two and a half plus 3.75 is the total size of the sign. Do I have that right? As we draw our square around it. Okay. I'll get you that.
Andrea Daly, precinct three, town meeting member. I just wanted to remind the board that this is an awfully big room and you're using sort of soft voices and you can hardly hear, hardly hear here. I want to ask the building inspector a question. Is it my understanding that the public access pack should have its own sign?
That's up to the board. I mean, that's their purview. They can wire that what they want. They can have it as part of the sign. It's totally up to the board.
Thank you. I want to bring to the attention of this board that, and I want to thank Rich Maloney for putting down the districts that we find ourselves in. So in this district with the Danvers Port Marina, we're in a residential two district. Please don't forget it because this is St. John's area, residential two, where Danvers Port or East Danvers, residential two. And having an illuminated sign, first of all, the Marina and the yacht club, the function facility, are non-conforming uses in a residential two zone. And so therefore, in this instance, because they're a non-conforming use in residential zone, there's not too many R2 zones that have illuminated signs, which makes it very honky tonk. And I am just pointing this out to the board that also I'd like to ask Rich Maloney, is the new function facility at 161 Elliott Street, is that in the illuminated sign?
Yes.
All right, well, I'm pointing out to this board that this is a residential two district and it's honky tonk. And it's an invasion of the people's right to live in residential two zone. That's one thing. And the other thing is, what is the exact font of the letters for a public access pack where to be on the new sign? On the older sign, it was one and one quarter inches tall. And driving by a car, it would be looking at anything that's on the bulletin board behind the building inspector and the secretary, very difficult to see. And I think that there are several people in this audience, both the Danvers Port area and East Danvers particularly, that for the first time, they're hearing that there is a public access pack. And it seems to me that the words "public access" are going to dwindle down to something that one would need a magnifying glass or a telescope to see what it is. I think in some ways that somehow these words are going to be disappearing from the landscape altogether. But going back to my original question, what is the size of the font of the sign of the public access pack words and the hours of operation and public loading? What is the size? What's the size of the letters?
Not a good setup, what we're doing these wires.
Hey, the height of the font will be 30 inches, 30 inches.
In my estimation, not very visible.
Pink comment, town meeting, precinct three. To the chair, um...
Rick?
Aren't we supposed to see a picture of the sign or something? You guys going back and forth with this sign that we don't have anything to, you know, the public here has nothing to see. So you're talking about this is what it's gonna look like in the rest of, the rest of that, the rest of people out here don't even have anything to see. I'm gonna say like hand, this is, this is... Precinct. That they're invited, right? As far as this sign goes, I mean, if you don't know where your boat is, you know, I don't think you need a sign lit at night. If you're coming from Beverly, you're gonna see your big sign for the, for the, whatever you call it now. All right? So I don't think you need a sign down here lit at night at all. It's the residential area. Why don't you put this up so... I don't think the public access... This is big enough. I don't think I told people to let go down there, they don't see that.
Jane Fuller, the Congress Avenue.
Did you speak out soon?
Jane Fuller, the Congress Avenue.
Thank you.
The access is between what hours?
7:00 AM to 8:00 PM from June 1st through September 30th. So the public access doesn't really need lighting? And you stated last time that you wanted to have the solar lights on here because dust happens earlier in the winter. The boats aren't in the winter, they're in the water in the winter either. So I'm not, I'm not for the solar lighting whatsoever. And a question regarding the solar lighting, so it's gonna be on the ground, so you'll have to dig to set up solar panels?
It's a landscape type lighting, so it's like a quadrupled, so you don't really have to do anything at all. It'd just be like something you put in your garden and let it with the market.
I just asked that because if you are going to do anything, you already have a 100-foot markers and for reference, you have to put, change the... Can I show this to someone?
Sure.
I'll give it right back.
Any other questions from the audience? No? Go back to the deliberation. Bob, start with you. Yeah. I think you have a very nice attractive sign right now. I think it will be pleasing, it is pleasing for people to try and sign, they look at signs. I don't think you need another sign, I don't think you need a lighted sign, and I don't think you need one face of the... So I vote on both of those.
John? Yeah, I just wanna make a clarification by our sign rules, this sign actually is 22.15 square foot, I mentioned. And I agree with Bob, I don't know if there's a need for this, and that's what we're here to decide on if this is invasive or not or detrimental to the neighborhood. It's clear to me the neighborhood has highlighted quite a few items, some prior decisions, and although you state, yeah, they're 30 years old. I mean, I would hope decisions I'm making tonight have made in the past stand the test of time, so I would go on to those decisions and say they were written in detail for a reason, so I would hope, we got, well, I wouldn't have written that. You know, I would say, you know, 30 years old or not, I would hope to be some dialogue between yourself and the neighborhood and try to correct them regardless of the sign part, but I also would...
Thank you. Jeff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can see the point of having the sign lit for guests of boat owners. Obviously, the boat owners don't need the lighting because they know where their boats are. I've been a guest on a boat a couple of times, gone at night. But I completely agree with Ms. Daly that the public access area font is way too small. It should be at least double. And I will vote for it because of that right now.
Okay.
Guys don't like the gap in between, I mean, it's just, it's sort of a total out of thought that public access, and I think the white on the blue background, especially in the evening, it's a little, I don't think it's really prominent. It sticks out, so I agree, I'd like to see a bigger font, public access, and have it look more prominent and stuff, but I couldn't vote for it.
Corinne?
I agree about the aspect of the public access. The blue, the white on the blue, you really can't see it. But as far as wanting a new sign, I understand that because you're trying to rebrand and you want your sign to match the other sign so that they're kind of uniform. So if you would fix that one issue, then I would vote for it.
Thank you. I obviously don't like public access area sign that's that small. I think that's terrible. I think that needs to be much bigger. I even think you need to have an open space sign. That being said, I would vote for this the way it was proposed. So it's obvious that you don't have the votes to... So you have some options. You can continue, make some changes to these signs, come before us again, withdraw. Well, you can take a vote, and if you don't get the votes, then you gotta wait two days.
Yeah, I have a question to Mr. Maloney.
Sure.
Are we permitted to change the logo on the current sign?
The graphics.
The graphics.
Yes.
The graphics and those.
As long as the sign says the same, you can change the graphics, we don't control Except the public access part.
What would you like to do?
I think we'll continue until the next meeting with the feedback that the public access should be larger from some of the members. Some members did not like the light. And are there any other concerns that I've not, I don't think I know?
With the gap, I mean, does it have to be a gap there when you make it all one?
We could.
Sign.
Sure.
Yeah, this is an FYI, our next meeting is actually a week from tonight, so you may wanna continue until the, I believe it's June 30th.
Then our material is due for next meeting.
We would need it by Thursday, three days from now.
Yeah, so move, Mr. Chairman, to June 30th. Thank you. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Second?
So the material would have to be in on, uh, May 30th.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Jeff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When will I have my attorney speak about the 10, uh, the 10 infractions about zoning bylaws?
At this property?
Yes.
Well, we already voted on what their application was for.
Yes, it's a sign, but I have other additional things to bring up before this board, which I, excuse me. Andrea Daylon, precinct three, town meeting member. And this, I'm choosing this woman, for, forum, excuse me, uh, to come before this board because they asked for a sign. And there's no, no other vehicle that I know of, and I served on this board for 14 years, chairman of it for two, that one can opt out to, uh, to ask this question. I gave each and every one a packet of information, a tremendous amount of information, uh, that addresses the issue of non-compliance and previous zoning board of appeals decision mandates, and the lack of the Di Lorenzo family to adhere to those decision mandates. There are 10 concerns that our neighborhood and neighbors, that most of us sitting here to listen to, as to what we have to present. And we feel like this is the correct forum in which to present our concerns and findings. There's no other vehicle to allow this. And here we are talking about a sign the Di Lorenzos were here. And Mike, I, I sent you pictures, and it's about the public access park, uh, and these are violations. And this is the only board that have direct standing in court. Your decisions are final. They, uh, they are authorized and they are put at the registry of deeds, which I've been spending a lot of time at.
I work there, I know.
Alright, have you seen me?
Yep.
You bet. Hours. And so I found out all of these things that I think have to be addressed because there's no other public forum to do so. And I want to address the public ask, act, access park issue, which they, the Di Lorenzos have not activated. Uh, and I'll give you the CBA decision filed with the same registry of deeds, July 25th, 1989. Now this, a lot of these decisions go back, and they go back waiting for Richard Maloney, who is the building inspector. He's done a Yovan's job of implementing the decisions that this board makes. I have no, no, no quarrel with him. But previous, previous board of inspectors have not. And, and 30 years later, this is still an active case. And unless these decisions are validated, then the Di Lorenzos have a cloud on their title, and they will not be able to sell their property. And they should realize that this is going to happen. And the, one of the things here is that the, uh, the public access park was supposed to be one acre of land that has not changed. And an acre of land is 43,560 square feet. And I think that when they split the park up into two parcels at a, at a past zoning board of appeals, they identified one part because they put a swimming pool. They, they cut the public access park in one half. And part of it was the swimming pool, and the rest was supposed to be along the water's edge. I would like the building inspector to verify that the two parcels equal 45,560 square feet. And I sent you pictures of that. And then the second problem that the Di Lorenzos have created is that it's called bait and switch. What they've done is they've taken the smaller park and made it fairly attractive. It's about as big as my living room, and they have put a sign there that this is the public access park, this is the ours, enjoy yourselves and sit at our park benches. And they have neglected to identify the larger portion, which is by their swimming pool. And so it's a bait and switch. This is where you belong, folks, not down here where we put out a canopy in the summer for the enjoyment of the people that are using the barbecue pits and are swimming in the pool. Now, this is supposed to be advertised, and they're also supposed to have eight dedicated parking spaces for the exclusive use of people that come and use the public access park. They are absent. They are not visible. They are not there. It's a free-for-all, and that should be there. This is a violation of a court document. And if people represent the town's interests, as well as the public coming for variances and special permits and whatever, whatever you say goes unless it's appealed at, at a land court decision. The boats are off, supposed to be off that property by June first, with a grace period of two weeks, and they're not. And this goes on year after year after year. It's supposed to be in the water or out of sight, but they have them there year-round. There's veg, there was supposed to be vegetation on the large boat storage building. There's no vegetation on that side of the building, and I spoke to Mr. Maloney about this, and he pointed out that it's on one side of the building, but it is not there. That building was supposed to be nautical in appearance and have a state of hedges out front of that stock building. And I gave you a packet of all of these photos, and I have them up here. And I'm not in the ability to go back and forth to point them out to you because you've got, everything that's here is in the packet that I sent to you.
Yeah.
Alright? And so I'm not done yet. But that has not been done. When does it get done? It's been years and years and years, and somebody has to take uprage to this. The fire lane, no parking zone. I went there two Sundays ago with my husband. The boats are on that parking lane. They are substantial boats. They are over 30 feet in, in length, and they, uh, the boats were very not easily fit in this room. They are that substantial. They are parked right on the fire lane where it says no parking zone. And I went to the fire department, and I brought my, my cellphone, showed him the pictures, and I, I left a message for the fire chief, Pyver, to give me a call. He didn't. This has been a whole week. And there's no place for those engines to turn around. I don't know how long, I guess they still call for a Moby Dick. I have no idea how that engine is going to turn around once it gets on there if a fire starts. And we know what fires are in Davisport because of the, the Davisport explosion. It was a miracle that nobody was hurt, but we knew all of the commotion that was at the, that marina. Then we have the pedestrian footbridge in Millard Creek. That footbridge was first noticed by a prior board in 1989. That was 31 years ago in six months, and it still is in there. The board, the, a board just like you, sitting there, they inquired for the attorney, they inquired about the footbridge from the yacht club to Parkers Island. The representative, their lawyer, stated that the bridge is on a plan pending before the State Department of Environmental Quality Engineering. If it doesn't re-sign the license, then they will take it out. That's like building a house and going to the building inspector saying, gee, I made a mistake, I built the house before I bought the permit. This is absolutely disgusting. The application is over 30 years old, it does not have a valid chapter 91 license. None. And it should be removed. And they also, when they built that foot, foot, footbridge, they built it too low, too narrow. There are no boats that can go up Millard Creek, but down Millard Creek. It is against the federal law to dam up a property like that. Every creek should have an open access to the water. If you take a look at the other creek on the other side, which is, which is Beaver Creek, that's what Light Taut's Boat Yacht used to be, and Bosworth Boat Yacht used to be. And you know that if somebody were to put a bridge across there, there'd be hell to pay. But in this case here, the town said that, okay, you put the bridge there, and so we're going to get into a covenant. The board of selection could never go into covenant like that. And the covenant was, we'll put the bridge in, but if anybody that lives by Millard Creek wants to have a boat, it can't go out around a bridge, it can't go through the bridge because it's too long and not wide enough. And I showed you pictures of that. Then we will have the Di Lorenzos give you a slip free of cost because you can't use your property. Those properties are also taxed at 1.25% more than the average property because they are on the water. The town, and I just gave you a map. The town has six properties on Millard Creek, and this is something I'm going to vote from here, I'm going to get on the agenda of a board of selection after town meeting to point out to them that the town has an interest in this footbridge also because it is an impediment against open waters and navigation. It's against the law. I don't want to give the town a black eye by going to Channel seven, five, or four to complain that they have a fielding with this. Because it's not supposed to be there. And so the Di Lorenzos, Di Lorenzos honored that to the year 2014, and only two residents of Congress staff who even took advantage of the slips. And the Di Lorenzos are so greedy for money that they turned to these people and said, uh, and they had to ask each year for that slip. Okay? Had to ask one year, each year for this slip. I'm gonna continue, so if, if you don't like this, you better call the police because I'm gonna stay right here.
Alright, we're gonna have to cut this a little short here. I'm gonna defer this to the building inspector.
No, I've got only three more to say, so you can hang in there. Alright, the trash of the wooden pallets on that marina. I gave you a photo on that, they have a very large bin there. They have tons of wood against it, and there's tons that overflow in which would cause a fire, if somebody dropped a match in there, or a cigarette. And there's no, no fence between the two properties at 107 Red Elliot Street and the Williams School. That is a planning board issue, and I'm going to address the planning board on that also. There was supposed to be a fence corrective between the two properties at 107 Red Elliot Street and the two and a half acres owned by, by the town in back of the Williams School. It has not been installed. This is a violation of a planning board decision, which would be addressed by us to the planning board. We brought this item up here because Richard Maloney is the enforcing agent for both boards, board of appeals and the plant court. There's, there's a gate at the end of Lincoln Avenue, there's no gate. And the Di Lorenzos are starting to, uh, manufacture another access for Lincoln Avenue, which is a paper street, because their sole purpose is to create another access from Elliot Street to the marina, probably for their future plans for a hotel, which is never gonna happen while I'm still alive. A 22-foot boat with an upward motor on a trailer with a large standing sign advertising the sales office of a property located at 107 Red Elliot Street. This is illegal. It's in violation with our zoning bylaws. The building inspector's office was notified by us just recently, and I'm sure that Mr. Maloney will address that. I have no quarrel with Mr. Maloney, but I do have, I have just reiterated to you people the 10 problems that this, these people have, they have not addressed it. It's like, just like this sign, that they go away, it's that little small swimming park underneath where it says public access park. How easy it is to unbuckle it and let it go away in the wind. This is not right for the town. This is not an honorable business. They have to do this because they've got a cloud on their title. And they won't be able to sell their property until that cloud is lifted, and the only way they can lift it is by adhering to these zoning bylaws. Thank you very much. I think I spent about 12 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Maloney, how many of these issues can we address on this board?
I'll tell you what, I can, I can go out to Parkers Island and, I'm not gonna solve the, uh, footbridge, it's out of my jurisdiction. But, um... Although on Parkers Island, I'll take the planning, the planning director, and I can take the fire department without the, uh... The fire lane, but some things have changed. There was some, you know, the berm versus the fence and the property line. Uh, I know Karen Nelson was dealing with that, and I don't know what they decided on that. Again, there've been so many decisions in the original land court decision, and then there was a moratorium, and then after the moratorium, this board has voted multiple times. So she's right, you know, the gate at Lincoln Ave, every time we get out there, help me get that gate shut. The boats aren't supposed to be over 161, where the new, uh, parking structure, the solar parking structure, which is part of that. And I will, I will confirm about the, the access area was changed in 2003 when the pool was moved to the island, correct?
Say that again.
The, the access area was changed in 2003 when they moved the pool from 161 to...
Correct, I think Mr. Chairman...
So I can review that decision and, uh, so all I can tell you is by the next meeting, I will have answers on everything I can answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone.
You're welcome.
Moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, our next case is Roger Pettit, socket number 19-4815, requesting a dimensional variance for a side setback relief to five feet for a 20 by 16-foot shed, according to section seven, table two, of the deal of the sign, zoning bylaws at 96 Wyandotte Street. I hope you all can hear me back there.
It's difficult.
Alright, I'll, I'll get louder, because I can get louder.
That's what Stephen is...
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll be out with it.
Yes, sir.
Peter, 196 Wyandotte Street. How you doing, Mr. Pettit? I'm here to, uh, to set that possibly taking back the original. It was a quite rare section of the water. If you, if you look at the plot plan, very rare section, uh, the stake is, well, west of the, the flat side of the sharp angle was to push the, the boat shed up into the middle of, uh, the yacht, which was getting on more trees and, uh, was trying to avoid the asphalt. Result of this going forward would actually put the shed in the front, right? I'd like to add too, that 20 by something is like that there, I've never seen a person...
That all you have?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Um, I just wanted, you know this proposed shed is 20 by 16, which is above the size that it's allowed, so it's considered a building? You know that?
Well, I have a check out, which I don't need. Kinda hopeful.
I just wanted you to know that...
Yeah.
Uh, what style do you recommend?
We have a, a copy, I guess, of the proposal. Would you just, it says right here, proposed shed. Is that where you want to put the shed?
Right in the right corner, correct.
So that lacks...
With, with this is up in the corner?
In the corner.
Okay. Okay, I don't, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Ken?
I don't have any questions.
Jeff?
I don't have any questions.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Pettit, um, so you're looking to go five feet off both of your log lines?
It's, it's actually, uh, if you go westward, the sharp angle, let me see, it, uh, it's not like the shed's gonna be directly opposed of the, by moving it up towards the right corner, I can tuck it in nice.
So you're looking to be five feet though in both there?
Well...
I, I'm just, I need to hear a number.
Approximately, approximately.
Well, yeah, we can't do approximately, though. We need a number so the building's...
Well, it's gotta be five feet.
Or five in both, right? I have a second question.
Well, you, uh, you do have a, a which shed present party, or like, at least you show up?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's towards the front of the property.
That's what?
That's towards the left front of the property, by the middle.
So why isn't that in a bad place? I mean, you said you, you wanna put this up here to get it out of the way, and...
Right.
But you already got a shed down here that people can see, and... I, I don't understand.
Well, it's...
Why is one shed bad and the other not bad?
Well, I build that to conform to, to the present house, so it blends in aesthetically. And, and as you know, if you have a shed, it feels uncomfortable.
So I know it. Alright, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Bob.
So you know that, obviously you know you're in R3, you need a 20-foot setback on either side of this shed. on either side of this shed.
Come on, guess what, again.
Right. Um, I mean, I viewed the property, and it looks to me like you've got a lot of wiggle room back there. I know there are some trees, saw the trees. I still think you have some wiggle room, and you think you could get it farther off to five feet. But it's pretty tight for a building that size.
We could.
I could, so it's possible.
Yeah.
Um, any questions from the audience? No questions over there?
I'd vote for this. I saw it, it's very woodsy, you know, it, it's a high-shaped lot, makes it kind of difficult for anybody to even see what's going on in the back of your property.
Like I said, 20 yards, 200 years, I don't think I've ever seen a person like that.
I would, I would vote for this.
Yeah, there's a hill back there and some trees and stuff. I would like to see it come out, have a little more setback, you know. If, uh, maybe if you double that five and go, go half of this one, put a 10, 10-foot rear, 10-foot, 10-foot side.
Sort of 30? Maybe not.
Yeah, I'll see what you guys have to say. I, I don't, I mean, I might consider it, it's, it's some more.
Jeff, we're gonna have to move on.
I don't see a hardship that, that justifies the difference.
John?
Yeah, I mean, I definitely understand the applicants, um, uh, well, I, you know, it's, uh, you know, I, I viewed the property yesterday, it's a, you know, it's a great property. He is tucking it up in the corner. Now, if I keep this tight, I think, I would like to see, you know, it's a 10. I guess I would like to see it be a 4.
I don't see a hardship here either. He's got the land, he's got wiggle room, he can move it over. Um, I will vote for this as presented right now.
I would like to see 10, I would just like to see half. I understand you have open space on both sides there, but I would like to see 10, 10 feet. Uh, you okay with 10 feet?
10 is fine.
Okay, you go with that stipulation?
Yeah.
I, uh, I could go to 10 feet, all right.
I would vote for 10 feet.
So you do have to vote, anyone wants to vote?
What's the process?
Well, we're gonna have to change the drawing.
All right. You're gonna have to make sure that's...
And be off both.
How about when I, well, I'll say, I need to go a current on this. Can I get, can I redraw that? If it's, uh, just a...
Yeah, you can work that out with the building inspector.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the, uh, the grand variance, the hardship is the, uh, shape of the lot. I move to grant the perpetual variance from Section 7, Table 2, the zoning bylaw for 20 by 16 shed. Not showing those grounds, because we are changing it from five feet setback to 10 feet.
On both sides.
On both sides, and that's the side. The height should be part of the, the, the light. Any other second?
You have a second?
I'll say it.
Oh, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Mr. Chairman, our next case is Sarah and Thomas, Rose Dowes, sorry, and Richard and Denise Drozwick. Sorry, I'm trying. Docket number 19-4816, requesting a special permit to erect an addition to a non-conforming structure for an EFL and a finding to erect an addition to a non-conforming structure of a garage in accordance with Section 9.4 and Section 3.1 of the Davis zoning bylaws at 66 Oneam Street.
Good for you. Um, so we are...
Can you state your vote?
Sarah Drozwick.
Thank you.
And, um, this is, for today's Drozwick, they're my in-laws. They've lived at 66 Oneam Street since 1978. And my husband Tom and I are looking to, we're going to purchase their house, and we're interested in building an EFL for them to live in and an addition on the, on the house as it is. Um, the house is currently non-conforming because the garage, as it is built, is more of a setback by equipment, so just the front corner. The back corner is, I think, 34 feet from the bottom.
That's it?
Okay, so people, I think it's just, uh, EFL.
It's as is drawn now, it's separate.
Okay, so you're gonna have a, uh, an EFL by right if you have the, the quality.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I, I looked at your property yesterday. Um, so what's to become of, uh, some rather lush adult trees you have in the back?
Uh, we were talking with the architect, he didn't tell us that some of the trees were about to be taken down.
Yeah, I think you have like three or four pretty stately trees there. So how, how many of those trees do you want?
I think there's two that will have to be down, and possibly the, the front.
Okay, and, uh, of course, this is the $10,000 question this board always asks, but could you please detail where your common area is on your floor plan?
Sure, when you are looking at the front of the house, there is a space between the garage and the main part of the house, that would be a mudroom, that you walk into, and then it goes straight into the EFL, or to the right into the main room.
So the mudroom?
Sort of, yes.
Okay. And, uh, what is the square footage of the garage that you're looking for in the finding?
Sure, the garage is existing.
Sorry?
The garage is existing.
So it's gonna be the same as it is already?
There's an addition that would be above the garage. The, um, addition to the main house could go above the mudroom and above the garage.
So the existing garage is not changed?
No, it's not.
It's not a new garage?
Thank you, Jeff.
So, the corner of the garage that makes your present house non-conforming, that piece of foundation is staying, and you're just going up to there?
Right.
Well, we have, I think we need a structural engineer to see if that garage was a part of that.
But dimensionally, you're not going to change that?
Exactly.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Ken.
So the total square footage, second floor and third floor is 750 square feet?
On the EFL?
Yeah.
Well, the EFL's only single.
Single, so you're not building anything on the, above the garage?
That, that would be part of the, the addition to the main house.
Okay. All right, no other questions.
Karen?
So the EFL is, they are basically three, three rooms, with them on the other side of the garage, and you're building above it as part of the addition to the main part of the house. Okay. Any further questions?
Thank you. Um, I think all of you have any questions? I have one, it's on top side of the...
Do you have a laundry room?
For, in the EFL?
No, you're gonna have, they, they, they're gonna share a laundry room?
Uh, no, they have a washer and dryer in the bathroom, and then in the house next to the basement.
Which usually has a common area that you can share.
All right, no further questions?
Um, I know that we were told the 750 square feet is part of that. Is there a way to get a smidge more, or no? Is it...
That's for it. That's what proposed on this point.
Yeah, a, a special permit gives us latitude to approve any size, but the town zoning bylaws are written, uh, 750 square feet. If you weren't here because you were non-conforming, you would be able to pull permits with the building inspector, without the whole floor was pulled. When you pass for a special permit, you have latitude to ask for it, and be up to this floor, on what size.
Well, all we can do is recycle it.
But we can only go on what... If you wanted to change them, we could continue, and we could come back at some point. Did I say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't have any other questions.
So Julie, third.
Any questions from the audience?
Julie, third.
Uh, this is Daly, Andrea Daly, recent three-town meeting member. Uh, also appointed as commissioner of the Davis Housing Authority for five years. And, uh, just as a point, I just mentioned it to the showman as I was passing by, that I would advise her to continue this and go just a smidgen larger because it's her right to ask for it. Uh, and serving for five years on the, uh, the, as commissioner of the Davis Housing Authority. Um, any, any new building that goes in now for senior housing, it's going to be a lot longer, a lot bigger than 750 square feet because, uh, what happens is somebody, if there's more than one, or even one, a lot of them go to wheelchairs, and it's very difficult to maneuver a wheelchair around in 750 square feet, they're very, very small. Let's say a minimum of at least 900 square feet should be done because that's what we're finding now for other communities that are dealing with elderly people, walkers, they need a wider roadway. It's not livable, but it's a transport from one place to another. Bathroom's definitely, you need a larger shower. All of the bathrooms in the Davis Housing Authority stock are extremely tiny, and accidents have happened, and people with walkers have had to go to nursing home facilities because of that. So I'd suggest to them a larger bathroom. Uh, possibly a walk-in tub, tub, uh, at least four feet by, by five feet, minimum. Uh, and the hallways wider, and, uh, also the bedrooms. I don't know if any of you people have gone into some of this stock that we have, but the bedrooms are eight by 10, they're ridiculously small. And I'm just, I, I'm in favor of this. I'm in favor of people that, like, trying to keep their parents in, in the homestead and look as a community, as we used to do in the old days. But I, I have no objection to this, and I'm just hoping that they continue this and have their architect put in something larger. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the audience? Tell them instead. Okay, the board. We're almost out of the deal. Do you wanna?
Change your time?
Yeah, I think we want to continue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, for sure, absolutely. We wouldn't end up going out anymore.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we continue this case to June 3, which is two meetings from now, is that not time? We would be due plans by, what did we say, May 3?
3rd.
In the office, May 3, so that we can go.
Add to, fight him.
Fight him. Or you can go out further, the next one will be June 17.
Oh, you can go to the 3rd, then if you haven't got what you need, you can continue with the... Send us an email, and continue for the next meeting.
We have one, June 3.
Okay.
June 3.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this case to June 3.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
See you then. Good luck.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, the continued case of, uh, docket number 19-4817, requesting a continuance to May 13, but we move that continuance to June 3.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Will the votes be moved here?
Then we go to another meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, our final case this evening is GM5 Properties LLC, Eric Womas Esquire, uh, docket number 19-4818, requesting a variance and special permit to develop the existing lot as a three-family residence in accordance with Sections 30.2, 6.1, and 6.3 of the Davis zoning bylaws at 21 School Street.
Jeff?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we are receiving a memorandum, uh, from a building inspector regarding this application. This applicant filed under Section 30.2 for a variance and Section 6.1 and 6.2 for a special permit. These are erroneous and cannot be granted by the zoning board. Previous building, as noted by the applicant, burnt down in 1983, and as such, had three years to rebuild per Section 3.16 of the zoning bylaw. The only way they can move forward is this, with this application, is to apply for a dimensional variance, variance, sorry, from the multifamily provision of 7,500 square feet per unit, and then seek a special permit through the planning board. So, uh, you, you have a copy of that?
Can I defer that, Mr. Maloney? We need to put them out.
Sure, they filed on the Section, um, 30.2, which is the special permit provision. The building would have to have existed in 19, 1980 to apply for that section?
Which it did not.
That building burnt down in 83, they had three years to rebuild it. So, if, if that building is not rebuilt by 1986, all rights were lost to them. So, in this case, the only way you can get a multifamily, starting from scratch, and that's what we're starting with here, is this board can grant a dimensional variance, and then the multifamily provision for new is through the planning board. So I think we would, I think we would honor the fee, but they're gonna have to re-advertise it under the correct provision.
We really can't hear this, it needs to go in there.
You can't grant the relief they're seeking.
All right.
So we would honor the fee, the zoning board fee, but they're gonna have to advertise it.
Have to re-advertise it.
So then you're gonna have to pay the newspaper, advertise it.
Yep.
So we need to continue?
Could we continue, uh, continue with the...
So how do we get the, uh, the... Do we have to... We draw our will on to the fee, and then just, uh, if we...
I'll withdraw, I promise.
How's that?
We need to have an outcome.
Sure, they can, I think they might have...
Yeah, and, uh, I don't know what, what else we can add to that, um, but...
Is that all clear?
Yeah, yeah, it's clear. Um, so, I guess what I'll do is I will, uh, so we should withdraw, and then, um, I can come see you, we can, we can put the proper...
Re-advertise and go.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Appreciate you having the time. We'll see you soon.
Good night, David.